Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, December 3 meeting of the school committee. And we start by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Okay, I will run through our agenda, which is actually rather short this evening. First, we will have recognitions, then there will be an opportunity for public comment, then we will have reports, after that, there will be budget presentations, and then on to new business. We have no old business this evening, and then we will have items by consensus and adjournment. At this time, Dr. McLeod, do we have any recognitions this evening?
Yes, I have one this evening. I really wanted to recognize, I believe it's the second year that they have done, the high school has held Top of the Hill.
It was the first year.
Was it the first year? Because I remember, wasn't it Josh's idea? Okay, Fish, alright.
He's been talking about it.
Alright. And were you there?
I was out of town.
Oh, because I was going to get you to help me with this, because I wasn't able to attend.
I was kind of planning on.
There you go. And so, the idea that Josh had, so Josh, one of the assistant principals at the high school, was to honor Hockington alumni. And so, they had the first one last week, and I just wanted to read the names of the individuals that were honored. I just think it's really wonderful. So, the class of 2015 inductees were Paul Phipps, 1939, Mary Beatty Harrington, 1954, Thomas McIntyre, 1972, Denise Millard, 1992, sorry, these are all the years that they graduated, Megan Finley Altador from 1995, the class of 1995, and Sean Terry, 2005. They were honored, they were all there with, you know, some of them had graduation pictures. There's a write-up here on each of them, and I just think it's a wonderful idea. I was disappointed that I couldn't be there, but I did want to recognize that these individuals were chosen for the first year for the class of 2015.
And they also met with students during the day.
Oh, nice.
And talked about their careers. So, they were honored for achievement in their field, or in, like, for example, Mary Harrington or Tommy McIntyre, that have given so much back to the community.
Nice.
So, it really was wonderful, and it was Josh's brainchild, was such a great inspiration for the kids, and kind of, you know, this is where you can go. And so, it was a really nice connection.
So, the criteria was based on their career?
It had to be nominated by, so, other people had to nominate them, and there were, I'm trying to remember, we probably had 10 to 15 nominees, and whoever was not selected will stay in the pool, so it'll be an ongoing thing, and people can continue to nominate them. But yeah, so, and I don't remember specifically the criteria, they need to have graduated from the high school and have made a contribution to their field or to the community. So, there really was a wide variety. I think somebody is a social activist, Paul Phipps and Mary Harrington and Tom McIntyre obviously really influential and contributed so much to our community, and so, other people had substantial, maybe one is an attorney, I can't remember off the top of my head, but their write-ups are on there. You were there, Mike. But it was, yeah, and I believe you can watch the whole presentation on H-CAM.
On H-CAM?
Yes.
Of course.
Which we are going to all go home and do tonight.
Yeah.
So, it was really, I mean, kudos to Josh, and this was a collaboration with the PTA and the HEF.
And HEF, correct, yeah.
And the 300th anniversary committee, so, really, an exciting program. Can I add one recognition?
Please, everybody can.
I just wanted to recognize the middle school drama program. They're having their play, it starts tomorrow, tomorrow and Saturday, and it's an original play that they wrote with Ms. Gifford, called It All Starts Here, and it's about the 300 years of Hockington's history, and includes the marathon. I think it's from the perspective of a boy who moves here and is learning about the town, and, you know, middle school boys, so, I can't wait to go see it, and I think, you know, there's no greater and more engaging way to get kids involved in the town's history.
And it's the eighth grade drama group, right?
I think it's the whole middle school.
Okay.
Right?
I noted, yeah, I noted that they have somebody acting for Mrs. Benvenic, so, one of the students is going to be Mrs. Benvenic, and one is going to be Mrs. Grady. So, I am very disappointed to miss it, but it sounds really...
That's going to be worth the price of admission, right here.
Yeah, there's a few cameos, I understand, so.
Yeah, so, that's this weekend, so people should turn us here.
There's a lot, actually, going on this weekend.
Yes.
There's the Christmas tree lighting this weekend, the HPTA is having a home tour around the town. Actually, there's a play with a bunch of kids from first grade through seventh grade that is the Magic Treehouse series.
Oh, yeah.
Happening on Saturday at the HCA, and I'm trying to remember everything else. Oh, the Skies the Limit Foundation is having their gingerbread house making on Saturday morning, so, which I'm thrilled about, because we had a great time there last year.
Fun. Do they do it here?
They do, right in the cafeteria, and you preorder your house, and when you come, the house is built, which is fabulous for anyone that's done gingerbread house making.
Yes.
The house building is the worst. And then, they give you all the supplies and the table, and you can just sit there and build and make your house and take it home.
And who doesn't love doing that, right?
Yeah, it's like, I mean, it was absolutely a great fundraising idea, because then the mess is out of your house, and you get to take it home. But there's a lot definitely going on this weekend. Fun. Okay, well, I guess if there's nothing else, we can move on to public comment, which we have no members of the public here, so we will skip on to reports. And the first report is from a student council member who is across from here. So, we'll move on to Mr. Graziano with the ESBC report.
Thanks. Not too much to update, really, just to highlight some upcoming meetings as we move into the design development phase for the new elementary school. We actually were just informed mere hours ago that we have been invited to meet with the MSBA this coming Monday, the 7th, at 2:30 at the MSBA offices. This is a transition meeting to basically meet the new team at the MSBA we'll be working with now that we've entered the design development phase. They assign us a new project manager and others for this section of the project. So, we'll be doing that on Monday, and then, we will be, the following week, we'll be starting our monthly meetings on design development, which will each cover specific relevant sections of design development. So, December 14th, we're meeting as a full elementary school building committee to review the lead certification items, as well as the site design review, and also hear an update on the educational planning progress. So, and then, we will have, again, one of those meetings every month through February, I guess, thus far, on different topics. That's all there is today.
Anybody else have any reports? And I don't have anything for the CPAC either, we haven't met since our last meeting, so. I'm in the chair report, which I have no report, and Ellen hasn't given me any report, so we'll move on to Dr. McLeod, Superintendent.
So, my report is really going to be the next report, which is the preliminary budget overview. That has been the entire focus of the past many weeks, and so, I think we can move right into that.
Great, so we will move into the budget presentations, which, the first one is Dr. McLeod and Mr. Dimas with the preliminary budget overview.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask?
Yes.
A procedural question. So, are we expecting others, because we're running about 25 minutes ahead of schedule?
We are.
We're a little worried about...
So, Mr. Mosher did confirm that he would come. I was looking for my phone, because I was going to text him, if you want, somebody could text him. I don't know if Mr. Matting is coming, I know that he was invited, that Janine reached out to him, but that is a very good point. I guess we could do, although it's very quick, new business.
Do we want to move into new business and do that?
Okay.
And we could do the items by consensus.
Could somebody text Al to let him know, because he's the only other person, both F. Schulte and Al to be here much earlier?
I'll get it, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, do we all agree to move into new business for the time being and move back to the budget presentation?
Sure.
Great.
That will be moved in.
Okay, so, for new business, we have the capital projects school department article warrant 16-026, in the amount of $11,720.70. Mr. Dimas?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to reach Al.
It's okay, so, this is the request for payment of the invoice for a capital project invoice, as appropriated in Articles 22, 24, and 28, specifically Ralph?
School safety and security.
Okay.
And outdoor court resurfacing.
Okay, well, there you go. So, thank you. So, that was what it was for. And so, you can see the recommended motion.
So, the recommended motion is to move to approve the payment of the warrant 16-026 in the amount of $11,720.70, the vendors as outlined in the warrant. Does anyone have any discussion about the motion?
Nope.
Is there any discussion or questions regarding the contents of the warrant? You guys are not helping stretch the time. So, okay, would anyone like to make, am I supposed to make the motion?
You ask if anybody would like to...
Would anyone like to make the motion as written in the agenda materials?
I will move to approve the payment of warrant number 16-026 in the amount of $11,720.70 to the vendors as outlined in the agenda materials.
Okay, moved by Mr. Graziano, seconded by Ms. Knight. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And the, sorry, the motion is unanimously approved.
Janine, did you text Janine?
I did, she's not answering, so maybe she's driving.
Okay, so, I could talk about that piece, and that is a really good idea.
Do you want to do items by consensus, too?
Yeah.
Would you like me to do items by consensus?
Sure. There's no business, so we're moving right along.
Okay. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve the operating budget and other funds warrant number 16-025 in the amount of $385,175.40. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve the high school student activities warrant number 16-027 in the amount of $11,033.38. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve $975 from the Skies the Limit fundraiser to be placed in the middle school gift account, as indicated in the agenda materials. I know. So, I'll...
Wait, we didn't vote.
Still moved.
There we go. Motion by Mr. Graziano, seconded by Ms. Knight. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
It's unanimous, it's okay.
How slowly can we write our names?
Well, we can talk a little bit about how we, the budget process has been different this year. Let me talk about that a little bit, and then, and that includes our missing guests, who are only missing because we asked them to be here at 7:30. One of the things, having gone through the process, and I know we've tried different things in terms of aligning with the town side, et cetera, is that it became very clear to me that because I'm the only department that has a committee, that we've already gone through our budget in great detail by the time we get to the Board of Selectmen's meeting in February, I think it's usually February, at which point, they haven't been made aware and have many questions that we've already processed or gone through. And so, really felt it was important that they be, that they feel included in the discussion level, and so that they can thoroughly understand and be aware of how thorough the school committee is in terms of all of the level of questioning that takes place with every single line. And so, we started that conversation, we started at first, John, when you were chair, and continued it this year, with Ellen, reached out to John Mosher and Brian Herr, who are our liaisons to the Board of Selectmen, and they were willing to participate. I felt that if they were going to be here, they should be able to do more than just sit and listen, and, as well as appropriation. So, we have done that. I know that Brian and John are going to share, they're going to come eat every other meeting, but we do have binders, correct, for each of them. So, even for the individual who isn't here, they will have the detailed information that they can review, and then, I'm going to encourage them at that point to call us if they have questions, at which point, obviously, I would be sharing them with the school committee, so that people are really aware of what it is and how we go through our budget process. So, the other thing that's different is that we, I guess, first of all, I want to recognize the administrative team, and just how hard that they've worked, and seriously, they've worked on this process since the beginning of October, which is when the budget message went out. I want to begin by acknowledging their hard work. From the very beginning, the message was that we want, we are looking for a budget that is absolutely necessities to maintain their programs at the level in which they are currently running, and that we needed to look at the priorities across the district, and that might mean that some buildings needed more than others. They brought that to the initial meeting, and when we finished all of that work, we were already at a percent that was beyond what we were going to be comfortable coming forward with. So, we did an entire, went through it all over again, and I just want to thank them, because it was very collaborative, difficult decisions were made, but never decisions that would compromise a program. And I was really, really impressed with the level of collaboration and understanding that people brought, that it's not just my department, or it's not just my building. And then, before, you know, we move forward, I just want to especially acknowledge Ralph and Bob for their leadership in this process, and Deb, who isn't here, Bartholomew, who was, she's always just so patient, you just never see her ever show any kind of frustration. I also just want to, you know, this whole process was done on Excel spreadsheets, so, it was being updated, like, immediately, and kudos to Mr. Dimas, because everybody had editing privileges, and so, for a little while, they're...
That's risky.
Just let them feel the power for a little bit, and then we...
Thanks to Ashok for his work behind the scenes.
Absolutely.
Making sure that all worked.
Right.
Set up in Google Docs, and get all that to work, and yep.
Yeah. So, we feel really prepared, we feel really excited, actually, about the next several weeks of being able to share what's, where we're at with the budget, and listen to your questions, and explain any questions that you may have. And so, I can't put in any more filler at this point.
You don't have any song or dance?
But there's a show.
I got this.
Okay, so, we can get started.
He said he's on his way.
Oh, good, okay, well, he'll have a copy of this.
Yeah, and I'm sure he'll watch on TV.
So, you know, I'll do the first couple slides, and then Ralph's going to jump in and do most of it. You are.
Budget highlights.
Did you want me to start?
Oh, yes, by all means, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So, the highlights, as we looked at the budget as a whole, once it was complete, was really being able to increase staffing to support priority initiatives. Although, overall, we'll be talking about the percent increase, what we wanted to be able to do is to stay within a reasonable increase while still increasing where it was most needed, in the areas that we're going to support the priority initiative. So, you will see the addition of another reading coach, so there will be two reading coaches. You've heard me talking about the addition, the numbers of second language learners, so you'll see additions of English language learner teachers. Elementary adjustment counselor is something that was a high priority at one of the buildings, and you'll be learning about that, and decisions that were made in order to be able to do that. And an additional BCBAA, I'll be talking a lot more about that, as well as maintenance to assist with, and you'll hear from Al tonight, focus on the grounds maintenance. Secondly, the other highlight is really looking at school facilities that support effective instruction, and you're going to be learning about some really exciting ideas that are going to be, that are in this current budget, that have been proposed for next year, particularly around the high school physics lab and additional lab, and the library. And when we get there, Bob is going to talk a little bit more about that, a middle school engineering classroom that's going to be created, and then, just maintaining, painting, carpeting, things that have been left off, that haven't been for the past two years approved. We really felt that these were important, we want to be proud of the environment, proud of our schools, and maintain the buildings that we have. Targeted professional development, we looked and have heard our teachers talking about the fact that they want the professional development to be aligned with what it is that they're being asked to do that's new, right? And it's not only that, we want to make sure that we're not sending people off to just one-day things that aren't really aligned with what we want them to be focusing on. So, if it's writing is the initiative, the PD is going to support that initiative. You'll see that in the curriculum, in the central office report. Technology, Ashok's going to be talking about this tonight. In his budget is the ability to attract and sustain a high-functioning technology support staff in what has become a highly competitive market, and I'm going to leave that to Ashok to discuss, but it's definitely a highlight, and really visionary thinking on his part in terms of how he was able to do that. This is ongoing from last year, meeting the needs of high-needs learners, and then, as you know, a focus, which is actually using student assessment to establish high expectations. So, not only gathering the information, but using the information that we have to create instructional programs that establish high expectations for students. So, these are the highlights that you're going to be hearing about for the next three weeks. Would you like to jump in there, Mr. Dimas?
So, what we have in front of us right now is the enrollment projection. These are based upon the most recent NESDEC report, which is dated October 28. At the high school, they're proposing a slight decrease. At the middle school, slight increase. At the elementary schools, slight decrease. Preschool, an increase of one. Art of District, Special Education, we currently have 27 students art of district. We're expecting it will have 25 next year. Vocational, that's Norfolk Aggie, we currently have five students. At this point, we don't have any better information, so, they're all underclassmen, so that we know that they'll be there next year. So, the total enrollment projection for next year is 3,473 students.
We're comfortable with this projection. If you recall, when we had the students that moved in throughout the summer, but the net was minus three, so we're very comfortable with this projection based on what we've been seeing, even though there's a lot of development. But as we go through, please jump in at any time with questions. Did anybody have questions about enrollment?
The next slide is, gives you a little bit of a snapshot of the, what transpired during the reviews that we did with the principals and directors and other department heads. The original request for increases totaled $2.9 million, which represented a 7.46% increase compared to this year's budget. The original request for existing staff, the cost next year for staff that we have in place right now would increase by $949,000. That's due contractual obligations, such as collective bargaining agreements, steps on the teacher scale, column changes for teachers, and there is an assumption that there will be settlements, that the teacher's contract will be ratified as part of that, and that the nurse's contract will at some point in time be ratified, and we already know what the cost of the paras is going to be next year. Add all that up, and the number goes up, $949,000, budget to budget, okay? The new staff that was requested was over $1 million. The increase that was requested in the expense categories was $927,000. During our reviews, we took a haircut to all of those categories. His existing staff has, cost for existing staff has dropped by $558,000. That's a reduction of staff who are currently in place. So, now, the budget shows an increase for existing staff of $391,000. The new staff was reduced by $84,000, and so, the cost of new staff is $958,000. And the expense categories have been reduced by $591,000, so we're now down to $336,000. So, we have a total budget increase that we're bringing to unite of $1,686,000, which amounts to a 4.31%, which increased from April 16 to April 17.
May I ask, on existing staff, is that because of people who have suddenly retired?
The $949,000 or the...
The difference, the ability to go down.
The difference, no. Well, in some cases, yes, but the majority of those cases is due to a reshuffling of the deck, positions changed. Our positions...
Were eliminated.
Were eliminated. For example, I think it was at grade five, the incoming grade five students in...
So, we'll talk about that before elementary.
There were fewer students at Hopkins next year, so we were eliminating one teacher. So, overall... Any other questions on this slide before we move on?
I think the piece that I mentioned at the beginning was this, the discussion about, you know, asking people, first of all, to bring priorities, and then, what of these priorities, because they all are priorities, what cannot wait? If you had to choose one, oh, please, our guest of honor has arrived.
Mr. Mosher, there's a sign there for you.
Hi, Mr. Mosher. Welcome, thanks for coming.
I bet you're stuck sitting next to me.
We're just doing the overview, you haven't missed anything. But also, what jumps out to me, and what I heard over and over again in meeting with the principals and department heads, was what's most important is staff. There are things that we can do without, but there are people that we cannot. And so, some of these things can wait another year, but we absolutely need the people to get the work done that we need to get done.
So, can I ask a question? I think I like the way this looks, but just want to make sure I'm understanding it as an apples-to-apples comparison of what we've seen last year, previous year.
Sure.
So, I like the breakout of existing and new, but if I compare it to what we usually see, the breakdown of personnel and expense?
Yeah.
If I just add the $391,000 and the $958,000, that's our personnel increase overall? Okay.
Correct, and you'll see that...
You're going to see it.
In a couple of slides.
Okay.
So, I don't want to belabor this if we're going to get into it during other discussions, but I guess I'm still not understanding with the existing staff, if you have an original request that has dropped nearly $600,000. It just seems like, how is that possible?
The $949,000 for existing staff assumed that everybody was coming back next year.
Okay.
And that they were all going to get pay raises based upon contracts.
Step in lanes.
Step in lanes and collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, so, what happened was the building principals looked more deeply at the needs for next year, is that...
That's the new staff line, but you're asking about the existing staff line.
To pay for the new staff, new positions, and to stay within a reasonable budget amount, some of the existing staff are not going to be in the budget, are not in the budget that's being presented tonight.
Okay, I mean, I gather we'll get into this more detail when we're talking about the various programs, but I guess it just seemed like a really substantial change.
It is. What will become apparent, and what we're doing, because we do it the way we're doing it, and we do different departments each week, we want to have the opportunity to speak with any individual who may be affected by the budget. with any individual who may be affected by the budget next year before they hear it here. And so tonight, we're prepared to talk about central office, curriculum, buildings and grounds, and technology in the nitty-gritty. And this is just giving you the overview that I know was missing last year, that we were kind of operating in the dark because we didn't kind of know what's the final number until we were well into the process. So this year, you know, first go around, we were at seven, close to seven and a half. This is where we ended up, and now we're going to go through all the details with you so you'll know.
And previously, the way we would have seen it, we would have just seen the $1.34 million as the increase. We wouldn't have seen that breakout.
No.
Which is that additional detail. So I'm sorry, I had one more question. Are you good?
Well, I was just making sure we didn't move on in case Mr. Mosher had anything to say because he just jumped in.
Yeah, I did, I wanted to clarify, so I'm just going to sit back.
Okay.
So is there anything in the, between the existing staff from the original to updated that involves, so I know we change assumptions sometimes on lanes. Did we reduce lanes?
No, we did not.
Okay.
No, we did not. The $949 remained unchanged based upon what we thought we were going to have for lane changes.
So this is, these are, I mean, it's going to come out wrong, but these are the actuals, they're not assumptions that drive that reduction?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask, oh, sorry. Can I ask a quick question about expenses? And maybe it's more of a statement, but if my memory is correct, last year, we also reduced expenses quite a bit.
We also did what?
Reduced expenses quite a bit.
We did. We really challenged people, challenged ourselves to level fund where possible and question any great increase. This year, we continue to do the same.
So let me understand, the reduction, the $591, that's a reduction over the original request in the 7.46. It's not necessarily...
That's correct.
Okay, so the $336 is the new expenses beyond last year.
So the increase is smaller.
Right, got it.
That's right.
All right, okay. Very good.
Okay. So the next one is just a total recap. FY '16's budget is $39,143. The FY '17 budget recommendation is $40,829,000, a difference of $1,686. That represents a 4.31% budget increase. And of course, the town doesn't pay for the entire budget. There is chapter 78, so we just want to point that out. So the next slide is maybe the one John that you're used to seeing, where the payroll, it's very interesting that it just simply remains 83%, 17% breakdown from year to year. I don't think that's changed since I've been here, because, you know, we're out a couple of decimal points, and, you know, it is what it is. But payroll's up $1,303,000, expenses are up $336,000. Those numbers tie right back to the previous slide, or two slides ago. Bob, could you go back there? Which shows $336 for expenses in a combination of the $391 and the $958 equals $1,349.
So Ralph, you bring up a good point that the 8317 seems to be our ratio every year. Not necessarily a question for right now, but it's just something that piqued my interest when you said that, is if you compare it to other like districts, is that about the ratio that you see with schools?
The business of education takes place in the classroom.
Right.
And so payroll is really the driver of a school budget. So I don't know comparatively how that would compare with area schools, but I would assume it's roughly the same.
Let's say, John, that if there's a district that you have more, a needier population, you might find that there's more staff than what we would have here. For instance, some of the schools that maybe have a more diverse population, or a lot more single parents, those types of things, you might find that there's more of a staff percentage-wise than we have, and it's just based on student needs. If you have needier students, you're going to need more adults to service those needs, so.
Makes sense. Thanks.
So the next slide is just another way of looking at the payroll changes. The contractual obligations for the current staff at next year's rates is up $949,000. But we're going to reduce that by personnel reductions of $558,000. Then we're going to add some new personnel in the amount of $958,000. Total payroll increases net is $1,349.
So can I, I'd like to add to this particular slide. One of the conversations, or the conversation that we were having with principals primarily, special education director, was when they would bring a request for a personnel increase, we wanted to have a conversation about what can you do without. So I was looking for a give and take. Sometimes we could do it, not always, but often. And so I don't want to talk about individual schools because I want to be respectful to the process of making sure that people are aware that their position might be being discussed. But it was a consistent conversation, you've heard me say, and Jean reminded me today, looking at, if we're going to be doing things differently, then we're doing things differently. And if we're adding on, what can we take away? Because if we're doing it differently, what we were doing before shouldn't be costing the same. The conversation we're having about paper use, if we're going to be bringing on all these devices and having a one-to-one environment, we should start to see a reduction in paper use and copying and those kinds of things. So it was the same, and you see it here, that's a significant amount of personnel, but it was because we were, that was the expectation that we had. You heard a similar conversation when we were looking to go to co-teaching. In order to get there, we had to reduce a significant number of paraprofessional positions. So it was similar. And as we get to each one, we'll explain in more detail what that looks like so that, you know, you can feel comfortable with those decisions.
The next slide is the breakdown of the expense changes. So in the technology area, there's actually a decrease in their expenses of almost $12,000. Central office, however, there's an increase of $139,000. That's being driven by, mostly by transportation. We considered at the beginning adding another bus. Our buses at the secondary level tend to really be jammed in the morning. But, you know, the more we thought about it, we're convinced that if we know who's going to be riding those buses by the deadline, which is June 30, that we can accommodate them all. You know, that may be a bit of a brag, but we have, we could reroute buses if we only knew it was coming. So we're just going to have to redouble our efforts to get people to understand that we really need to know by that deadline. So we pull that out. However, one of the problems that we're having is that we don't have as much money in the school bus fee revolving account anymore. This year, we used, I think, $364,000 to offset. Next year, we're only using the $210,000 that we currently have in the budget. At this point, the budget does not assume that there are any changes in the fees. And, you know, obviously, the school committee will decide that. Curriculum and professional development has a slight decrease. Athletics is up $7,000. Prices go up, and we're assuming, again, that there's not going to be a decrease in the fee. Regular education is up $50,000. That's made up of all kinds of stuff, books, supplies, et cetera. Buildings, grounds, and utilities is up $72,000. We have a lot of buildings to maintain, and we don't have as much money in the revolving account as we did in the past. Occupational day, you heard at the last meeting that we have two more kids at Norfolk Aggie this year, FY '15, than we thought we were going to have. So we're only budgeting for the five that we know we have next year, but the FY '16 budget was light. And special ed, special ed is only up $29,000, which is a miracle, but not really. What's driving that, keeping that increase down, is the new way of paying for our accept transportation. Our FY '16 budget was about $100,000 more than it had to be, because we didn't know that we were going to enter into this new agreement for the new billing method. So we don't yet have our final number for FY '17. We'll know that next week. So that number could go up, it could go down, but I don't expect that it's going to go either way significantly. And...
Do you have questions on the expenses?
Sorry.
Yeah, two questions, Ralph. So understand the rationale behind the bus, but from a context perspective, what does a bus cost?
About $60,000.
And then, second question, you mentioned, I understand from the athletics and transportation perspective, the reduction in the revolving accounts because we've been systematically lowering fees, but that's not the case for building use. So are we getting less, why would the...
That's interesting, because we're actually, this year, we'll probably get more than we have because we're...
Why?
Because of tech, renting a room here for $6,900 bucks and for the YMCA program. In the past, I think we got $25,000 from Kidsboro, and we're on target to make above 30 to 35 on the YMCA, so there is a little bit more. But we have a superintendent who really cares about the facilities and...
Oh, yeah, and I'm not questioning the spend, but you had said that there was less in the revolving account, and that didn't...
Well, no, at the end of last year, there was only $11,000 in the revolving account. So over the past...
Oh, because we tapped it more.
Yeah, over the past few years, we've been depleting.
We're not carrying the balance, okay. All right, that's, okay, that makes, yeah, because we've been depleting the revolving accounts rather than carrying the balance, right. That makes sense, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Plus, we have a superintendent.
Yeah, we heard that.
Yeah. That I'm in favor of, I just wanted to...
There you go. And so the last slide is the budget timeline, and that is what that is. The only thing that might be a surprise is on December 17, I think the school committee probably ought to prioritize the capital requests. Al and Ashok and I met with CIC last night. They didn't ask us for a priority list, but it's probably wise for the school committee to do so. And I know that the town manager likes to get that information by the end of December, just the capital piece. And I believe the board of selectmen actually did a cursory review of the capital requests Tuesday night.
Yeah, not as in-depth as we would have liked. Just a quick question on the revolving account. So is that carrying less because more of it's in the, being budgeted for, in the general operating budget?
On buildings and grounds?
Yeah.
Yeah, because your costs either stay the same or go up, and your offsets are going down, so a gap is the operating budget. So, I mean, a few years ago, you know, I know when Al talks in your packet there, I think there was a balance of about $190,000 in that account, and over the years, it's whittled its way down to about $11,000 at the end of last year, simply because there wasn't enough in the budget. So we had to tap into the revolving account to an extent that was greater than we were taking in.
So, okay, I'll save some of my questions for you.
It's worth noting, too, that we, last year, as a committee, adopted a new set of financial policies and actually adopted a new strategy with respect to revolving accounts that involves carrying fewer balances in the revolving accounts and doing more as, more of a sort of pay-as-you-go, pay-as-you-collect approach with the revolving accounts. So those balances are going to naturally be lower because that's, because of that adjustment in practice.
All right, great, thank you.
Hey, Ralph, to your point about the capital requests, so the 17th, so the 17th is a regular meeting, right?
Yes.
So what I'm wondering is, could we, because it looks like the 10th, which is a special meeting, should only be elementary and sped, because I think technology's up there twice?
We decided to have technology each time because...
Oh, there it is, every time.
He's doing an overview.
Because Mr. Gosch can't get enough of us?
Yeah, but, and then we looked to break it down, but Ashok, I'll ask that of you. Do you think it's necessary that you, would there be something that you would add specifically at the elementary and secondary levels in addition to what you're saying tonight?
Do we, I definitely come back and answer questions.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm remembering last year's process, there were different times where the technology came into question when we were talking about curriculum for different areas. Whether or not, whether or not that means you have to be at every meeting, I don't know. I do just remember that we would get to a point about something in the curriculum, and it would be technology-specific.
Bob, as long as Bob's here.
I do, yeah, no, I agree.
I mean, as long as Ashok does his overview tonight.
Right.
But we can always call you because we know you watch all the time, so we could be like...
He could call us if he sees you coming up.
Yeah, you could text the answer, yeah.
So regardless, so what I'm wondering is, if we want a prioritized capital request, would it make sense to do it on the 10th?
Yes, it would, John.
Because we don't have as much to cover.
Thank you. Yep, I'll write it right in there. Thank you, Ralph, for that suggestion.
Kathy, you have the updated one.
Do I? Okay, thank you.
With the 26th item on it.
Oh, excellent, great. Okay, so we can, we can move on if you're ready. We can invite Ashok up.
Okay, great. Mr. Gosch, if you would join us.
Certainly.
There's also a room over here if anyone wants to join me.
Did you want Ashok to be up here?
No, no, it doesn't matter, whatever it is.
Probably a better mic.
Should I be over there?
Yeah, that's fine. It's totally fine.
Careful, though, because...
John, the other back there is for Brian. He and I are probably going to tag team. There's another one.
I'm going to give that to Brian tomorrow.
All right.
Yep.
We're going to have to move. I got it right, I'm like, ooh, what the options.
Could you go make a change to that slide, or do you think it's unnecessary?
I think you have copies of the executive summary unless you already have them.
Here in my book.
Do we have them? Looks like it.
We have it.
Oh, perfect, all right. I wasn't sure, so I thought I'd bring some paper copies. I try not to print right out of the...
All right, thank you for having me this evening. I thought I'd start and talk a little bit about the district technology priorities before I begin and before we get into some of the numbers. So a few of the priorities that we have for FY '17 really starts with the first one, which is looking at a new student information system. And I just want to point out that this is an item that will be listed as one of the capital items that was presented actually last night. So it sits outside of the normal revolving accounts. And this is really the main system that supports all of the student information that we have in the district, which replaces IPASS. It's been a great system for many years, but it's now come time to upgrade and move on for a number of reasons, which I can get into in just a bit. And so it's been in the capital pipeline for a little while, and this is the year that we're going to take a look at it. The second thing is personnel, as Dr. McLeod mentioned earlier. This is a big focus area for the technology budget this year. We'll be looking to add a few positions, one being a new data analyst position, a new technician, and then we'll talk a little bit about the restructuring of the current staff that I have. The third priority is maintenance. Obviously, we have a number of systems and pieces of hardware in the district, so we'll focus on maintaining the existing equipment that we have. Priority four is looking at hardware upgrades. We're looking at teacher laptop cycles, labs for a few of the buildings, and continuing to update some of the existing LCD projectors in some of the classrooms. Finally, number five is software consolidation. So there's actually some cost savings in this area. There's not an expansion here, but I thought I'd mention that because we've been able to consolidate some of the software we've had and save some money for the district. And finally, professional development. We'll continue to provide professional development for teachers as we migrate into these one-to-one learning environments. But at the same time, I do want to point out, as we move forward, that there was some reductions in this area, primarily because we've started to leverage the train, the trainer model. So we've actually had a few years where we're training staff internally, and now those staff are being teacher leaders and are training some of the other teachers as we move forward. So there are some cost savings from that approach. So the overview, the three areas for this year's budget, the number one priority and focus is personnel. The second area is technology support, that supports instruction. And then the third area is going to be technology maintenance. So just to talk a little bit about the personnel, which is the main priority, the first area is restructuring. And this is to take a look at the technical staff that we currently have on hand that are within the district, primarily... the district, primarily the technicians and the network admin and data manager. After many years of discussion, we found that there's a couple of areas that we need to improve on, and we need to, A, create a pathway for these technicians as they come into a district and grow and develop, we need to have steps, and we're kind of looking at switching and migrating from an hourly system to a salary system, and having steps that are based on skills and license and certifications so that they can move and grow as they come into the district. The second area is a full-time student data coordinator. This position is really intended to help teachers. There's been a lot of requirements put on the teachers as far as crunching numbers and providing student analytics to kind of assess instruction, and so this person will primarily be taking data, putting it into a more digestible format for teachers, and helping share that with teachers, and helping teachers analyze that data to make instructional decisions. And the final position is a new full-time technician, that would be district-wide, that will help support the added devices and technology that's currently in the district. And the real driving factor with that is, the one thing we looked at, is the ratio of devices to technicians. Currently, with the four that we have, it's around 1 to 1,000 right now, so it's pretty high, and it creates quite a bit of workload for our technicians, and it really gets to a point where we're never able to quite complete all the tickets that we have in our ticketing system and manage day-to-day tickets.
Ashok, what does the state recommend on that? I know we're 1 to 1,000, but what would the state tell us?
The state in the advanced district is looking for a ratio around 1 to 400. So, with the increases and additions of devices over the last two years, that number has really jumped up, so it's really a priority to make sure that the technology is functioning on a day-to-day basis so that teachers can really focus on instruction and not worrying about whether their machine is going to work that day or not. And the second area is really, you know, ticket turnaround time, you know, how long does it take for one ticket to get turned around, how many days or hours does that occur, and we really would like to reduce that, so teachers or students really aren't put out of their way. So that's the main focus of adding another technician.
Before you move on, can I ask, with moving positions from hourly to salaried, and this might not be a question for you, it might be for Mr. Dumas or Dr. McLeod, but what benefit impact is that in terms of, when you move from hourly to salaried, it usually has an impact from a benefit standpoint?
So, you can answer the benefits.
Yeah, there is...
Do people get any benefits, that's charged to the town side?
There's no change in benefits.
But the hourly piece, Ashok, you can answer that, you know, in terms of the hours that they had to put in over and above in the summer.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is that, you know, as far as to answer the question, as far as Ralph's saying, there is no, there is no change in benefits, most of the staff have full-time benefits currently. But the one benefit we'll see is, we do temporarily have summertime help that we hire, so there's a reduction in that summertime help as well to pull in this position because of the amount of work that happens over the summertime. And on top of that, there's a number of events, right, that happen over the course of the year, whether it's supporting things like town meeting at night, or if it's supporting a certain event at a high school or a building, oftentimes, we have to pull them from the day so that we don't end up paying them overtime so that they can work some of those events, or shuffle the schedules around, which puts us in a tight position sometimes during the day. So, having this flexibility in a salary-type position will give us, hopefully, help us better meet the demand that we have currently in the district.
So the big change that we anticipate seeing now is a reduction in overtime, or the need to even worry about overtime?
Yeah, because the overtime, just the professionalism, I think, as well, in terms of how dependent we all have become on, as Ashok said, making sure that our technology's going to be working for us. We've become, this is just my office, and if it's not going to work, unfortunately, everything's in it now, fortunately and unfortunately. And so, it's the same for the teachers, when they walk in the morning, they're ready to do a lesson, we're encouraging them to use technology to capacity. If they go to use it and it's not working, obviously, they can teach without it, but it's frustrating, and so, so that's the other impact, is just maintaining a level of professionalism that we can count on, who know our teachers, who are part of our work, care about our district. That's what Ashok's trying to do.
And I would say the other key point in the restructuring is obviously retention, which was brought up earlier, but retaining the staff that we're currently paying and professionally developing, so they don't leave and seek out another position for a higher rate of pay, which is an ongoing struggle.
And I think that's critical, what you just said, you know, the training, the certifications that they're getting, that we're sending them to things to increase their abilities. We don't want to increase them and then lose them. So, the idea of having this restructuring, which you can see is not a lot of money in the big scheme of things, really buys us a lot in terms of maintaining and having sustainable staff.
How do contracts work with technical staff? Are they part of any kind of a...
Teachers, the Association?
They're not under any other contract, you were saying, creating staffs?
No, no, they're not.
So they're just hired, like, I'm hired at my company, they're just hired, like, a personal?
At-will employees.
At-will, okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. They're not unionized?
That's correct.
No, they're not.
Can we, hold on, can we talk back? So, two questions. One, so the student data coordinator, that was something that jumped out at me, because this is obviously student data, Dr. McLeod knows where I'm going here, it's sort of a hot topic, the amount of data and assessments that we're collecting. So just to be clear, because you mentioned the replacement of the iPass system, but this sounds a little different, so this is somebody who would be assisting teachers with the analytics around the student, the student achievement data, the student, all those baseline assessments, et cetera, helping them create those analytics?
Correct, but in addition, and this is an example of the give and take.
Yep.
So this has been creating a new need in the district because of the huge amounts of data that we're using, the fact that we're collecting data, but then wanting to do something with it that will inform instruction now, not next year. Right now, we're having very intense, not intense, very intentional conversations about, okay, where are we, it's December, how are kids doing, if they're struggling, or if they've been struggling last year and they're still struggling this year. Lots of data that can support, helping us know what to do differently, but as Ashok said, the time component is huge. So, what this position has arisen out of the reduction of the curriculum position, partly the reduction of the curriculum position at central office, and when we get to central office, we'll talk more about that, but realizing that that role has really changed and morphed, and more of the curriculum work is happening at the building level, but there's a real need for taking this data that's been analyzed and being able to really provide that kind of connection to, at the teacher level, who might not have that level of expertise to analyze data in that way.
And just because of the nature of it is why it becomes more of a technology job than a curriculum job necessarily.
Correct, yeah, and those worlds are...
I mean, I know that they're, I know they're close to the link, and I know at the end of the day, the org chart doesn't really matter that much, but that's, it's a different kind of position to see in the technology budget for us, and that's why I wanted to highlight it.
Again, why I think it's so unique, and...
Can I ask a question, though, and also offer a comment? I mean, as far as the student data coordinator, I feel like this is something we've been hearing about for a while, and I feel like it's very consistent with everything you've said since your interviewing process, really, which is, A, at that time, you were telling us, you have so much data and you have no idea, you don't have the ability to use it, or you're not using it effectively, and that's been a big focus of our strategic plan and your curriculum work with, your professional development work with the teachers. So, at the same time, you have teachers who are teaching, and now there's a learning curve of using the data, you know, learning how to crunch and turn the data around efficiently enough to have an impact, a real-time impact on those students. So, I see this as really critical support for all of that, basically. I mean, if I understand the point of this position, it's to really help facilitate that process that we've all put a lot of time and energy and money into creating. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And the question that I have, because I barely know how to use iPass after however many my, something 2019 year in the district, is there money in the budget for parent training, for whatever's the new version of iPass?
Yeah, there is, and it's going to be a year-long process. So we're obviously going to transition and migrate over a period of time, because there's lots of people, obviously, that will need to be trained and updated on the system, and there's also a lot of data that will have to be migrated. So, you know, if approved, the data migration would begin in the summer, training would begin in the fall, sampling, and then the initial outline suggests, you know, early migration in the spring.
Okay, and I assume there's also got to be training of the staff to do the input?
Correct.
So, and then, just to circle back to the data coordinator, I assume also that this person is supporting Lynda Henderson, or working with Lynda Henderson, who, as far as I can tell, is superhuman in the amount of work that she turns around.
She is superhuman.
That's correct. This position will definitely support Lynda in all the work that Lynda is currently doing.
That's sort of where it fits in the puzzle.
Well, maybe they answered John's initial question and your question a little bit. The reason this person is not sitting out in the world of curriculum and is under technology is the fact that some of the work will be working directly with staff, and that's the curriculum part, but another large component of this is what happens behind closed doors, and that's going to be populating systems, putting kids' names in, updating schedules, all that type of thing. Some of that will happen during the year, but a large part of that will happen at the end of the year and over the summer. And so, that's where the overlap will happen with Lynda Henderson. We still need to have her dedicated to making sure that the information we get off to the state is accurate, that we get to the federal government in terms of civil rights is accurate, and those reports and those tasks are becoming larger each year. So we need her to remain dedicated to that, and we need to take some things off of her plate. So that's what this person is also going to help, and we've had a lot of conversations around that about, how could we sort of chop up one job and another and still make this all work? And it made a lot of sense at that point, John, that this person has to sit under technology because they have to get trained in, how do you set this program up, how do you import schedules, how do we make these things work? So at that point, it just made a lot of sense, that's where this house, this person should be housed.
From respect to that new student data system that you're talking about, I know it's in a capital article, have we, has it been selected, or are we procuring it?
No, the team is just beginning to meet this week. We're hoping to go through a series of processes and have a selection, you know, in late spring.
Okay.
So there'll be a series of rounds, there'll be criteria defined, there'll be community input, there'll be staff input, and then a selection in late spring.
So would the target be that, you say late spring, that we might have a selection by the time we go to town meeting, or?
Ideally, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the goal.
I mentioned to Bob while we're here, I went back to the first capital plan that was in place when I got here five years ago, and the replacement of a student information system at that point was scheduled for FY15, so it's been in the pipeline for a long time.
Absolutely.
This moves us on to the expense summary side of the house. So I talked a little bit about, these are some of the major accounts within the technology budget. And the first one really is the network infrastructure. There is a reduction there of $3,500. This account primarily supports existing infrastructure, primarily the wireless networks and the various buildings. So the money that's in there now will go to maintain those systems, but also add a few access points in some of the public spaces where we have large gatherings, where we might need additional coverage for events like town meeting, or where we have big professional development opportunities where we might have hundreds of people there, you often need extra access points to have the bandwidth necessary for those trainings. The tech contracted services account is also down $4,430. The reason for this kind of reduction is because of a consolidation. We were able to move some of our products that were housed in the cloud internally, so there was some internal software that we moved in that saved us some money, so there are some reductions there. The AV supplies and maintenance account is split among all the buildings. There's, these cover major equipment repairs, replacement costs across the buildings, they typically pay for repairs like microphones and sound equipment, additional sound cables, and just the general upkeep of the equipment that we have. The technology maintenance account is up $10,000, and this is primarily due to the increase of the equipment and the technology in the district over the past two years, and this is the main account that really focuses on all the maintenance, anything that's really electrical or plugged into a wall that has to be repaired throughout the district usually comes out of this account. Continuing with the expense summary, the instructional software account is down this year because of those consolidations we talked about. We did some surveying and really looked at existing or old software that we had that was not effective or not being used in the way we felt fit and decided to reduce some of those, but also, that was to bring on maybe some new software. So even though there's a reduction here, the consolidation also allowed us to bring in new software to align to district initiatives and building initiatives, allowing us to still move forward. The professional development account is down $25,000, which I mentioned, a large part of that reduction is due to the trainer model, where we've trained staff internally, and so, instead of, as an example, instead of sending someone else to, let's say, a Google summit for a training, we're now hosting a summit internally and running it ourselves. So, doing things like that has allowed us to reduce our professional development budget.
Our technology department also presented a MasQ this year. How many presentations?
We had four staff present a MasQ, which is great.
Yeah.
Which was really exciting. This chart kind of illustrates and highlights the different instructional technology accounts throughout the buildings. The pre-K, there was a reduction primarily because of the laptop cart that was purchased for them last year, so there's a reduction there. At Center School, the increase there is continued to support the teacher laptops and new projectors in the building. The same is true for Elmwood. The big increase in Elmwood is primarily due because of the laptop refresh, but also what's not mentioned there is, we did migrate some of the iPads from one building, from Hopkins to Elmwood, so in order to clean up the accounts, we moved that lease expense to the Elmwood school, so if you're doing the actual math, a part of that increase is due to the existing equipment that we already had. Hopkins School is up $10,000, that's due to new laptops and projectors for the building. The middle school and high school are both down significantly, but even though those are down, we will be upgrading the graphics lab at the high school to maintain the computers in that building and that additional projectors, which are still aging and failing in a lot of these spaces.
Can I ask about Center School?
Sure.
With the projectors, are those going to be movable?
Yeah, and it's very few. So, I say projectors, I looked and cut that significantly. A lot of the projectors were cut significantly, a lot of the budget was cut significantly, so that is really funding maybe two to three projectors, and we'll keep those primarily to see if a projector goes down, and then we'll replace it. Once we replace it, we can actually move the hardware to the new building, we won't move the wiring.
So, do we use the same projectors throughout the district so that if you had something as a backup for one building and another building went down, we can interchange?
We're working towards that.
Okay.
We currently don't, but as I've taken over this position, we've done that. So we primarily support two models, an interactive model for the elementary schools and a non-interactive Epsom model for the secondary levels. So those are the only models we're putting into the buildings now so that we can consolidate costs around replacement of lamps and things like that and repairs. So, that's currently what we have, but we still have older existing projectors that are different models, yep.
What is the cycle for the teacher laptop refresh?
The cycle for the teacher laptop refresh is four years.
Four years?
That's correct.
Is that based on a warranty, or what is that number based on?
Well, the Apple warranty that we do carry is a four-year warranty for Apple parts, but primarily, it has to do with a number of issues. Teachers are power users, they require a lot of power, and over time, some of the devices, the battery life decreases. As the software gets older, it's more difficult to upgrade the software to the latest operating system, which then sometimes causes conflicts with the various software suites that we have. A lot of times, it's just slowness, bugginess, which leads to problems with teachers running the day-to-day lessons that they have. You know, for example, now, with some of the elementary machines, they get that spinning wheel of death that we can't seem to resolve, and what that does is, even in the morning, it puts them off from taking attendance, you know, so the first thing they have to do is open that computer, and if they're having trouble taking attendance, that puts everything off, you know, throughout the rest of the day. So we've noticed that more and more with the elementary machines, and it's definitely time for a refresh.
Kelly, those machines are worn out by four years. If you imagine a teacher typing every day, taking it home, doing those things, those machines are pretty beat up. We've tried to put them on carts and put them in different locations afterwards, and it's just a few of them that we're able to actually bring forward, they're pretty beat up at that point. I would say, even if, you might even be looking at three years, and they'd still be pretty taxed by then. So four years, I think we're getting, we're getting our money's worth out of that.
Thanks. Actually, kind of interesting, because I was going to say, in private industry, I see a refresh sooner than four years, so I thought it seems like a reasonable amount of time. I just, we're not working off of max, so it may be different based on the operating systems, but at the same time... But at the same time, it seems like a lengthy period of time, especially with how much the technology and software changes year to year, so.
Good point, Lori. Thank you.
They still, we'll still keep them, so I don't want to say that we're just throwing them out. They will, they will be used in the cart-based model for some of the schools as well, so they'll still stay with us. Other questions about?
I actually have a question about laptops.
Sure.
Because we're in our, our senior class is our first laptop class. So, and so the kids can either just return their laptop or buy it for a dollar. Do you have any sense of what your yield is going to be and what the, what will you do with the ones that are returned? Do we return them to Apple, or?
No, I mean, I would imagine 99% of the parents are going to buy, they've already technically paid for them. It's really a matter of paying the dollar. So the value is taking them and even, you know, selling them or keeping them and using them. So the value is for the parents to buy them and take them. I expect very little.
Okay.
Returns. I don't have an exact number. Come February, we'll put out the letters to parents saying, you know, it's time to purchase the laptops, here's the dollar and the final amount, and we'll get, we'll get an idea then of how many may come back. But I think it's going to be a very small number.
If they're purchasing them, will they have to be, you know, wiped of?
Yeah, typically, the management software will come off of them. But then, any software typically that's on there was bought, most of it was bought with the machine, so it's owned outright. There is a few software pieces that we put on, like math software, for example, that's a yearly piece of software. We can automatically pull that off. So because they're managed, we can pull and push software, so we can pull that off. We'll take them in, clean them up, and then give them a receipt if they paid for it, and away they go.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the instructional technology side? Okay. And that kind of, kind of wraps up. I mean, this is any time for further discussion about the items. And this is a Hopkins class, actually, doing some hands-on creative work. The iPad is there primarily for a resource, so it's another way to use a device besides, they're not always just sitting in front of devices, obviously. There's lots of ways to enhance instruction, so this is just another example of it.
Quick, have you met our new director of IT?
I have, yes. We, we've met a couple times. I saw him last night at the CIC meeting, and then we met and debriefed a little bit last week and touched base on this afternoon, so yeah.
Has there been some cooperative projects that Chris McLaure had run before he left town? I didn't know if maybe you and Josh would get a chance to sit down and see if there's any, any matchup on the town side and school side on equipment, or contracted services, or infrastructure, anything like that, that might be able to save some money for both sides?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've had some initial conversations, and obviously, we still started and led the safety, security idea, so that platform still exists, and there's some shared resources there for the town to take advantage of as far as the software side. There's also some, you know, moving forward, some opportunities to basically collaborate on a number of things, especially with the shared data center. So I think we're, we're looking at currently what's available there, and he's still trying to figure out what, what he has and what he has access to. But I think moving forward, I think there's opportunities for consolidation around, you know, data and talking about like how we can, you know, digitize more things and make our normal workflow and process, day-to-day processes more efficient.
Good.
So I think we've had some initial conversations, but I think there is some opportunity.
All right, good. Just want to make sure you guys were talking.
Yeah, yeah, he's been great, and he's been a good hire, so.
Good, thanks.
Does anyone else have a question?
I have just one. And it's harkening back to recollection of last year's discussion and where we were rolling out more technology to another grade level. And it may not be for you, but for the team as a whole.
Sure.
That's not here. So are we already at where we want to be, or are we just not looking at it for this year?
So, thank you. I'll just jump in there and then give it back to Ashok. I wanted to point out on one of the earlier slides, but it seems self-evident, and when Ashok came back with his original initial ask, it did include that next step, which was presented last year in his technology plan. We asked him to prioritize because the percent was too, so he put that on hold, reduced his budget by over half a million. Significantly reduced because when we said, what can wait? He said, my priority is personnel and everything that he just explained to you. And the, the actual rolling out of the devices can be put on hold. We do know that for 2009, for FY19, when do we have to be ready to do PARC or MCAS electronically?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So we have to be ready to do it electronically by 2000, by spring of 2018.
So what was the rollout? I'm sorry, because I'm not recalling.
Okay, so we needed to, the next step would have been Elm?
Yeah, so let me just back up and start by what's existing. So currently, we have a full one-to-one program at the high school, which is obviously either a purchase, at least an own for the laptop, a bring-your-own, or a loaning from the district. So parents have options on how they participate in that program. The middle school is currently a one-to-one program, grade six through eight, with Chromebooks that are obviously funded by the district. Hopkins School is a two-to-one model now with Chromebooks, so they have a cart-based model where basically two classrooms are sharing one cart of Chromebooks. The elementary schools are at around a six-device in a center model, six iPads in both Center School and Elmwood, so six iPads per classroom. We have, we're maintaining basically a lab at Elmwood School still. There's a semi-lab in the library of Hopkins, and then the only lab we're maintaining at the high school is the graphics lab. Other labs have been broken out or recycled.
So I know this was already taken out for this year's budget, but what would have been the next rollout?
The next rollout would be moving towards a one-to-one environment at Hopkins.
At Hopkins.
With Chromebooks. We find with, right now, the challenges they have, that they're, they're great and they're loving the devices, but because of the team structure and the structure they have, it's very difficult for them to use them in the way they want because of the way the sharing of the carts is set up. So they love them, it's great, they're working, but for moving forward, I think a one-to-one is going to be better. We're still with carts, you know, not at that point taking them home yet, but having them based in carts.
So to get back to what you just mentioned, Dr. MacLeod, we need to get to Hopkins and Elmwood?
We do.
We need to get to at least Hopkins. We have the option, obviously, to decide what we want to do. And I think that Elmwood, we'd make the call as we get closer. Is it going to be paper-based, or is it going to be electronic? And I think some of that doesn't necessarily revolve around, do we have the equipment here at Hockington? Are the students prepared enough to take a test online and show everything that they really know, or should we stick with the paper? So we'll make the call at that point in time. Maybe we need another year or two to practice and get a few more devices in those earlier grades, and have the students take some high-stakes tests in those earlier grades, and maybe then we'll be ready to say, yeah, we're ready for grade three. But we certainly want to be ready in grades four and five.
So I know, and this number is definitely going to change each year, the pricing changes, but I mean, if, if it had been included, you were saying it was a half a million?
Not for the, not.
It wasn't just the devices.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking at adding additional Chromebooks, just at Hopkins, for example, it's not, it's not a huge addition, you know, roughly, you know, 30,000 or so to get additional Chromebooks. You know, that's an at least model, not purchased outright, but.
I know this is all hypothetical, and you had to already take it out, but it's just helpful for future planning.
It is.
Knowing what we have coming up. And also to know what you were forced to take out.
And you can see all of that in all of the backup pages. You'll be able to see the detail because you didn't have it in advance this time.
Yeah.
You weren't able to, but you'll be able to look and see, you know, where things were leveled, where things were reduced.
Okay.
In the future, too, I'd be happy to share. I have a forecast, too, with the instructional technology accounts that I can share with the committee. It kind of maps out my expected expenses for those types of purchases over the next 10 years, to give you an idea of where we're going.
Perfect, thank you. I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. So, so Ashok, it sounds like you're really combing through things to consolidate software, consolidate the devices we have, try to kind of pare down to just a couple of different flavors that are easier to maintain or usable. I can't say I'm at all sorry to hear that iPass is, is going to be gone.
You're not alone.
I call it iPass is my frustration.
Yeah.
And this, I do have a question, though, and this probably isn't the format to answer it, but at some point, is, is there going to be some, some evidence base for where there's instructional improvement? What grade that starts to happen with the technology is? So I guess in my mind, I'm listening to this, I think you're doing good things, but just on a curriculum level, is it, is it a proven benefit to have iPads in Elmwood and iPads in Hockington, or, you know, when does that start to prove a benefit?
So what a great question, and I would be delighted to work with Ashok and with Bob to put together a presentation of the many, many ways. The biggest thing that comes to mind, John, when you ask that question immediately to me, is engagement, student engagement and individualized learning. Those two things are, and then, of course, aligning that with, with evidence. But when we see kids who are engaged and who are not just sitting in the class, you know, right, we know that they're going to be much more successful. We can also individualize instruction much more easily when we have technology. And then the third area is for students who struggle in terms of you asking for evidence, we're having that very conversation right now, which is to say, if kids have not been achieving with their current program, first of all, what is it? What have we been doing? Is it working? And if it's not working, then what's their profile and what, what kind of support or program did that they need? We know that often, it's something that we can have, we can provide through technology, and now, and it's much more easy. It's easier to individualize in that way. Then we can track the student progress over that eight to 12 weeks to have a comparison in terms of how they were progressing before we provided them with this improved instructional approach. So those would be really exciting things to be. Every time I visit a building, I'm, I'm just blown away by watching what's going on in classrooms. And when you talked about the lab at the Elmwood School, I was there recently, watching a class of second graders using Google Map. But not only were they using Google Map, like they were mapping their own home, their own neighborhood, but then they had some kind of a graphic organizer that they were using to collect their data and store it in folders. And I'm watching these kids, you know, just navigate all of this, but it was so individualized. It was fascinating to see. So I just see examples of that every time I'm in a building. At the Hopkins School, they were doing something that had to do with responsive classroom and students having to be able to, you know, stand up to bullying or something like that. But the quantifiable piece is a really, really great goal for us to have and to begin looking at. I'm convinced about, it is just natural to think that engagement is going to increase learning, but we need to be able to look at and, and apply that directly to, to the technology improvements. So I will make note of starting a little.
And John, I would simply say that in terms of quantifying it and doing that, our ending goal is for students to be able to do this higher-order thinking in this electronic environment so they can excel on whatever assessment that they're taking, whether it's an MCAS 2.0, whether it's an AP task, whatever it is. And so we want all the students, the device becomes invisible, they're able to use all the tools, they're able to think and apply what they know, and it shows up on the device. So at that point where this does become invisible, where I know enough about the tools and how to use it, that I can show you this higher-order thinking here, that's our ending goal, that really is. And so we want to be able to provide the students with skills so that no matter what the environment is that they're being assessed in, they can excel at it.
That's, that's great. Thank you for the explanation. And it sounds, it sounds like it's going to be really interesting, too, with the, with the data portion, you know, when you start to get meaningful data out of that, and then what you can do with it.
Yeah.
Just want to confirm, no drones in this budget?
No, not this year.
I thought I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashok.
Excellent, John. Thanks, Ashok.
You're welcome.
And it looks like what you achieved tonight is that you don't need to come to the next two meetings, so.
Mission accomplished.
It's off the slide.
Except you might be on call.
But you're, you're not on the slide, so there you go.
You'll come back.
Thanks so much.
You being here kills our ratings, though.
No, no.
No, because you're not, you're not watching.
No one's watching.
That's what you mean.
So our next is Mr. Rogers with Buildings and Grounds.
How are you, Al?
Good.
Good, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Lori.
I'm assisting in the technology.
You are? You're doing awesome.
I'll let you get set up, and do we have any presentation, or is this?
Nope.
Okay, great.
So he'll speak from the overview.
Perfect.
Ashok did his overview. Technology Director did it.
Yeah, yeah. Hi.
Maybe next year.
There we go.
There we go.
I was thinking about some.
Little graphics, video clips. It's true.
I didn't show my video, I'll just show it. Okay.
So, the, well, let's, we'll start with extraordinary.
Let me, let me stop by asking if they've even had a chance to read it, because we didn't get it to them in advance. So have you, you have, I'm assuming you have not.
I'm reading it right now.
Okay, so then you do need to go over it in more detail. Thank you. Great.
So we'll start with extraordinary maintenance. And at, at the Elmwood School, we want to fund some re-carpeting of classrooms. Eventually, you know, hopefully in the renovation of that building, we'll be able to rip out all the carpet and do the whole building in VCT, which is a lot easier to maintain, and it lasts longer. Painting the common areas, hallways, doors, the gym, those types of things. The exhaust fans are, most of them are original to the, to the last renovation in '89. They all need to be replaced, so those are all the rooftop exhaust fans. Repairs on unit ventilators, that would be replacing valves and motors and those types of things in the unit ventilators. Each classroom has a unit ventilator that supplies heat and fresh air to the space. We also need to replace the rooftop condensing units for the, for the library and the computer lab. I got some help from an engineer last year to help guide on, on how we can do that, so we're prepared to do that now. And I, I cut the, the painting by half to support some other stuff, and we cut some carpet replacement also, you know, just to prioritize things. Moving on to Hopkins, RTU2, which is the rooftop unit that supplies heat and air conditioning to the core of the building, the library, and all of the classrooms that are in that middle section. There are two compressors that supply air conditioning. Both of them were limping along and failed over the summer. We were able to replace one. This is to replace the second compressor. The middle school, continuing some painting, oh, excuse me, that was delayed, the, to paint, repair, and move some, some lockers. The lockers that were put in in the '96 renovation in addition are in bad need of paint. And also, we'll have a locker company go through and make repairs, so they're easier to open and close. And the principal wanted to move a couple of banks of lockers, too, so that's figured in there. It was prior practice to when, when a student was in a classroom and had some hearing problems, they would carpet the whole classroom. I started, instead of carpeting the whole classroom, I started using area rugs so we could move the rugs with the student. So a lot of those carpeted classrooms, the carpet is, is in pretty bad shape. And we also had offices in, in those areas before we moved across the street. So we'll be ripping out the carpet and replacing that with VCT, which is easier to maintain, and it lasts longer.
Can you just tell me what VCT is?
It's vinyl composite tile.
Oh, okay.
So it's the one-by-one tile that you see in the corridors in the classrooms. We're going to make some engineering upgrades, engineering lab upgrades, that's the former wood shop. We split that in half two summers ago, and we'll be making electrical upgrades, plumbing up. And we'll be making electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, carpentry, we're going to be putting some doors in, painting, painting the floor to support those new programs. And we've delayed a request to air condition the conference room. At the high school, there's two transfer switches for the emergency power. So when that switches power from street to generator power in a power failure. So there's two transfer switches there. One of them is for life safety, which is things like some emergency lighting, servers, the PA, the phone system. The secondary one that does most of the lighting, the freezer, the walk-in freezer, the refrigerator, those things. That one, we've had trouble with in the past. It's failed twice. So it's been recommended that that be replaced. Some electrical upgrades in science and project areas. Those are classrooms that we've made into science rooms and found that there's not enough outlets. So we'll be hopefully doing that. And the request to replace the scoreboard with two LED scoreboards was moved to capital. And then, system-wide, we'd like to purchase a scissor lift to help the maintenance guys get, it's a more stable lift. Currently, we have one-man lifts and they're very shaky. And the scissor lift will be able to get closer to walls so they can work on wall spaces. And that'll be district-wide, we'll be able to move that around.
And we'll be able to store it at the new building because there's going to be space.
Yes.
Yesterday, they talked about having room for a scissor lift storage, right?
Yep.
Perfect.
Personnel, like to increase the maintenance staff by one person. This person would be dedicated to grounds. Currently, we have one person dedicated to grounds. And, you know, if you read the paragraph there, all the things that maintenance does. But there's 20 acres of athletic fields that are very high maintenance, you know, lining, cutting the grass. During sports seasons, the grass has to be cut at least twice a week, sometimes three times a week. They have to be lined, fertilized, seeded. So this person would assist in that.
Al provided us with comps to surrounding districts with similar types of yardage footage. And we're definitely low with one person. In addition to the fact that we've been, you know, there's been a lot of public comment on the grounds. We are proud of having people come and visit, walk the loop road, all of the different, beautiful, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful acreage. But to be able to maintain it in the way that it deserves to be maintained for one person is just not possible. And in addition, during the dormant months, which are, you know, the season is long, but during those months when we can't be doing as much outdoors, certainly they can be helping with snow removal, but they can be an additional inside maintenance worker for jobs that we can save until the winter. So I just want to throw that in in terms of, you know, Al did a lot of research on this. We also had an outside auditor come in to give us some comprehensive comparisons and recommendations, and this was one of them.
So last year, we were able to put a maintenance person in each building. But, you know, right now, we have to pull those people out of the buildings to help with ground, so we'll have to do less of that and less contracted services, you know, be able to do more of the stuff in-house. And we try and purchase equipment that will help out in those areas also. Like to add a half a custodian to the middle school. This would bring it, bring the middle school into, more into power with the high school. Right now, each custodian is responsible for about 35,000 square feet with this other half position. It would be down to 31,000, which is more in power with the high school. That person would also, if people are out, I could move him around or her around and...
We've had certainly expenses around, you know, overtime because we can't find subs. And having somebody like this that would know the buildings and know the rest of the staff, instead of having to incur overtime, this individual could be hired at a sub rate. And so that's another benefit. But it's also in keeping with comparisons and recommendations, we're still high, I was going to say we were low, but we're still high even with the additional halftime person. So it's a real need. I know that there have been things in the past that were just cut from, significantly cut from, buildings and grounds because it seemed to be an easy place to go. And I think it's showing. And it's time to get ourselves back to where we need to be in terms of the buildings. And so just want to put in another, just, there was a lot of work that went into this recommendation, and thank you, Al, for all of that.
The utilities have been level funded as is contracted services. The grounds maintenance account was reduced by $6,800. And that additional maintenance person.
Partly because of contracted services, right?
Right.
Yep, so that that reduction, right.
Maintenance contracted, I mean grounds contracted services.
Right.
The custodial supply accounts, we keep very good records and we averaged over three years what our use was and this reflects that use. We're also doing, well, we're doing inventory. And I have a vendor come in and he does inventory quarterly. And he tells the head custodians more or less, you know, what they need rather than, you know, ordering too much stock. So we only have stock on the shelves that we absolutely need, so things don't sit and get stale. Same thing with toilet paper, paper towels and that stuff. And the rest reflects what Ralph was saying about the revolving funds.
Yes, right, overtime, right? It has been depleted and you can see that. You ready for questions?
Questions, sure.
I have a couple of questions. And they're kind of, they're kind of actually specific instead of high level, but just anecdotally, I've been hearing a lot about the phones in the high school phone system not working. Are you, is that a significant problem? Is that addressed in here?
That's actually Ashok's.
Well, it's a good thing you're here. Thank goodness you said.
The question was the phones in the high school.
Yeah, in the classrooms.
He's going to answer me in a blank.
High schools.
Yeah, sit right here. Sit right here.
To be honest, I don't have any recollection of that was getting to our team as far as being a major concern. So is it ongoing or is it a one-time?
I mean, just anecdotally, I've been hearing about it in terms of some incidents that happened in the classroom and not being able to reach the nurse. And then as part of the Alice drill, I think that was some feedback that kids gave about the new, you know, teachers having challenge with operating the new phones in the room. I don't know personally how widespread it is. It could be two or three people. I just was curious.
They're a lot more user-friendly than the system we had before.
Yeah.
What I can do is follow up with Alan and figure out what the specific issues.
It's high school.
Oh, sorry. The high school and see what the issue was and then talk the text. But as far as the functionality, the general functionality of the phones, it seems like they're, they've been great.
Didn't they use Price's Go during the Alice drill?
Yeah, they did. They used, we're testing an app that they were working on. So I can check with them, definitely see. As far as the general functionality of the phones, it's been, they've been great.
Okay. I mean, and you would, in the normal course, like a teacher would fill out a ticket and you would get notified of it that way. That's how that works.
That's correct. And if there was a major issue that, you know, Evan noticed during the drill, you would definitely email me or pull me aside and say, hey, what's going on with us?
Yeah.
And even today, we're testing the, we're trying to make Evan be more mobile in those types of situations. And we're actually testing the phone system to be able to page from his cell phone. And we actually got that to work. So the phones are pretty functional and so we'll work on the issue if there is one.
Thank you.
I don't think I have other maintenance questions, but I, yeah, I mean, I do, I do agree that this has been an area that's taken more than its fair percentage of hit when years were leaner. So it's not a surprise that your list is pretty deep. And I know we're not getting all of it, but it seems like you prioritized really well.
Yeah, Al did a great job of prioritizing. He came in with a list and then those priorities went quite a ways down. And we challenged him on a lot of those to come up with this final budget that we pulled together. So we did a great job.
And he has a great team. You really do. Yep.
I have a couple of questions. Al, I should know this, but I can't remember. Are any of the buildings Energy Star rated?
They're not Energy Star rated, no. We've made great strides in energy management. We went through and replaced lights a few years ago. We have LED, all the exterior lights are LED, everywhere but center, all the exterior lights are LED. That's probably the next step is LED interior. When we did the interior lighting upgrades, the LED technology wasn't where it is today. That's probably the next step to, but Dave Del Torrio and I will be working on the next Green Community Grant, so that will probably be part of it. We've also upgraded our building management systems, the HVAC controls. So, you know, we can put things in unoccupied mode when people aren't using them. There's also, when spaces aren't used, air handlers will go into standby mode. There's CO detectors that can detect this room. If we all left the room, the CO level would go way down and the air handler would go into standby mode. So, you know, the temperature would be lower and the blowers would only come on when needed, you know, to maintain that lower temperature. So we've made great strides.
Have any of the buildings undergone a comprehensive audit?
We had RISE Engineering come through three, four years ago, Ralph? And did an energy audit and we, you know, we addressed a lot of issues.
So I saw the utility, utilities were level funded. And I know sometimes with a retrofit on LED, you can end up saving a pretty substantial amount of money. Same thing on HVAC upgrades and things like that. So I just wanted to get a little more insight in what the plan might be there, the long-term plan.
John, our electricity bills, and I know this isn't usage, but the electricity bills, you'll see it there, in FY12, we used $718,000 of electricity. Last year, we used $503,000 in electricity. Some of that is due to price reductions with contracts, but most of it is due to decreased usage. The solar on top of the middle and the high school help in the work that was done at, I think we did it at Hopkins, the middle and the high school, over the years, has, you know, dropped our usage down significantly.
That's great. Along those lines of electricity usage, I recently learned a program that Acton-Box Road did on load shifting with ISO, and they saved like tens of thousands of dollars just by shutting down for a few hours on a couple of days during the summer. Are we doing things like that also?
Well, of course, during school breaks, you know, there's no night use, so, you know, we're shutting things down then. But during the day, there's a lot of activity going on, even during the breaks, including the summer.
But when, John, when you're talking about load shifting, because I don't know that term, I'm assuming that if we were to turn things down or shut things off, does it take more energy to get it back to, is that what you mean by load shifting?
No, it's a little more complicated. I can follow up with Al. I just was curious if it was something we were currently participating in.
Yeah. I mean, if it's going to save tens of thousands of dollars, we're going to want to know about that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's a great thing to learn more about. I'd like to know more about load shifting.
Google it.
I'm going to Google him. All right. Those are great questions. And I've made note of, you know, this idea of, you know, what plans can we have for the future, obviously not, would not be in this budget, but for HVAC and LED lighting and just planning for those ongoing improvements as we move forward.
Yeah, sometimes stretching those out isn't always the most economical case.
Yeah, yep.
And as Al pointed out, some of the technologies have evolved now or it might be, enough time has passed since RISE had been in here to reexamine it.
Yep. Great.
The LED lighting is not just an energy saving, but it's a maintenance saver, too. You know, there's a lot less, there's a tremendous amount of work involved in maintaining the fluorescent lights, ballasts and bulbs to be replaced, so.
Well, I thought about that when you mentioned the extra staff member and I was curious how many hours are spent on bulb maintenance now versus if we went to an LED solution interior, if that would be enough hour offset where you wouldn't need the staff position? But, you know, I don't know.
One of the things that Al wants to do and wasn't able to do in this budget is to be able to hire somebody who has HVAC certification and train, and/or train somebody. And we had looked at what the cost of that would be because you have to get, you have to get somebody from outside to come in to do that work currently, right?
Yes.
So that's another thing that we're looking at in future budgets is to be able to have those skills and talents internally. So you've been starting to think about that.
Anytime we bring an outside company and we have to pay them prevailing wage, well, we don't have to do that to an employee, so.
I'm sure there's more things they could do than just change light bulbs, so.
Sure.
I'm sure you can keep them busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm all set with this one.
No.
So I, I just had two. And Dr. McLeod, one of them was a comment you had made about saying with, in terms of, I think, the middle school custodian that we were still high, were you talking about the square footage to person?
Yes.
Okay. I was just making sure I was understood. And then, obviously, there's quite a few delayed improvements or, you know, maintenance projects that you have on here. I just wondered if there was any way to quantify what those delays amounted to in terms of what we pulled out.
Yes, yes. We have those numbers for you and I can get them for you. Ralph made, and I didn't bring it, a comparison in terms of percent. And then you could, that would be a helpful document to look at when you look at the supporting spreadsheets.
And I mean, obviously, I'm certain that your prioritization was right on par, but nothing that was delayed was going to cost us more money in the
No.
...future if we didn't do it this year. Okay. Great. Those are all of my questions. Thank you very much.
All right. I guess just one last thing would be, Al, is to, if you could make sure this information gets over to Dave. It sounded like you're working with Dave, because I'm just seeing as we look at our comprehensive camp update, that we're including your numbers in what we see also. Okay, thanks.
So you'll get that to Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're always, you're in communication.
Yeah, we're actually meeting after my vacation weekend. We've set up a meeting to go over that and prepare for the Green Community Grant.
Great, perfect.
Al's heading to England.
Oh, exciting. A great new grandchild.
Do you speak the language, Al?
Actually, no.
Al, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
And I know our next presentation is Dr. McLeod and Mr. Verlo. Please excuse me for saying, I have to run to the meeting room, but you guys have got it started.
You sure?
Yeah, you absolutely can.
We could just chat.
It's okay. We already had.
I could talk about Elliot.
We had to put enough filler into the meeting already.
Something else to pull in. Okay. Great.
I'll start with the budget overview and then Kathy can jump in. So this is going to cover both the curriculum side of the house and professional development. So this is going to cover both the curriculum side of the house and professional development. These budget items align to a lot of the strategic plan initiatives. So I didn't list them all, but they all come under the headings of curriculum, instruction and assessment, as you'd expect in here. As Kathy mentioned earlier, we had some questions around this early on, which was the existing staff versus the new staff and how that decreased. One of the conversations that we had as we worked towards reducing the initial asks to what we are at now centered around positions. And in the world of curriculum, one of the positions that ended up not making it across the budget horizon was the elementary curriculum director's position. So that's been eliminated currently from the budget. The work that's being done currently by that person is going to continue, obviously, because it impacts a lot of the strategic plan initiatives. We're going to look to leverage existing staff that we have and some teachers that have stepped up into leadership positions to continue the work and to see that it goes to the next level. As well as the assistant superintendent will take on some of that work as well. So the more that the SMLs are able to do in the high school, I feel the less that I need to spend my time there on a regular basis. So I'll be able to refocus a little bit more on the elementary grade levels.
Bob and I led, in the administrative retreat this summer, we talked a lot about teacher leadership and sustainability of initiative. And we did some readings around it and worked as a group around it. We went to a training this summer along with Karen Zaleski, led by Dr. Paul Ash, who was the former superintendent in Lexington. And we learned a lot and talked a lot about the fact that people, teachers have to own the work. They have to understand the curriculum. They have to be part of the decisions that are made in order for there to be buy-in and sustainability of the work. And it's not just about aligning it and packaging it up and putting it in electronic binder. And we've been really working towards that with the admin council. I believe in it, I really believe in it, that that's where it needs to be. But you have also supported us in being able to do this work by increasing, for example, the number of curriculum teacher leaders. You know, when I got here, there were none, right? And then we started with ELA and then we brought on math.
There were none in the elementary
At the elementary, yeah.
Yeah.
And then reducing the amount of teaching that the subject matter leaders are doing. So that's a piece of it. But you've also supported the addition of assistant principals into the elementary buildings and then increasing their days from 185 to 210. So that, those have all been things that the school committee has supported that has allowed us to really provide more building-based work in the area of curriculum. So as we've examined, where are the things that, where there's duplication of effort, we feel that this is one that we want to be able to think about doing it differently. Okay.
The other thing I wanted to bring your attention to is the fact that the ELL staff is now not in the world, the budget world of special ed, is now in the world of central office. So what you'll see is there's a fairly large staffing increase, but it's not necessarily because we're increasing staff. It's been transferred out of the world of special education into the assistant superintendent's office. There are, however, 1.2 additional positions. So there's 1.2 new positions and this is to meet the needs of the number of students that we have, the number of ELL students, English Language Learner students that we have. We believe that that'll meet our current population and that's a total then of five positions that'll show up in there. 3.8 existing that we have right now and 1.2 additional ones. This year, you'll see a reduction in the textbook asks, both for the elementary and secondary level combined. We were able, and we were lucky, to be able to use F1 funds in the past to offset this, but that's not able to be done any longer. That account essentially is paying for salaries and we're not able to use it to offset textbooks. So we sat and then took a very hard look at additional textbooks. And so for this year, we're moving forward with Chinese texts and Spanish texts. And that will cover the high school for the Chinese and the Spanish is for the middle school. Those are the primary things that you'll see in there. There are some, there's a writing program under the elementary text that we're going to bring to address the needs that we've identified this year in grades four and five in Hopkins School. Did you want to add anything, Kathy?
No, no, good, thank you.
Professional development, it's very focused. Even though the overall account has been reduced, what we've done is, knowing that we're going to ask for a little bit less, we're really sharpening our vision and focusing on less. So we're going to do less total initiatives, but we're committed to those initiatives. One of those initiatives is in the early grades, this is the kindergarten up through grade, part of grade three, all of grade two, but few teachers in grade three. And this is to increase their foundational literacy skills of our teachers in all of the elementary grades and part of grade six. It's increasing their math content ability, what they understand with math and their ability to use it to teach more effectively. And those are what we're really focusing on. Those are some very large things. Across all grade levels, we're going to continue to focus on looking at data. How do I more efficiently look at data as a teacher and how do I let that inform instructional decisions? So that's going to also continue into next year. I'll be happy to answer any questions. There's some more, a little more details underneath, but essentially I've covered it.
So Bob, so programmatically, there's no, obviously, there's no significant curriculum program that we need to bring on or upgrade as we have in past years.
No, what we're looking at and what's on the horizon, you asked to show some of those questions. What can we expect in the near future?
Well, because I know there's, we're still, I thought we were still aligning the standards in certain subject areas, right?
Yeah. Science is the big thing that's coming on. So we're going to do that internal study and then that will show up definitely as, under textbooks and some other materials for next year. It absolutely will. The timeline that the state is giving us, it's two to three years. They're going to come out with the exact guidance next month on that, all that. But they're saying that that's the last schools' time to sort of figure it out and get up to speed in terms of budgets and supplying and training of staff as well.
Has that guidance been slower than expected?
Oh, yeah.
Because I, okay, because I feel like we should have been expecting it in this year based on what I heard in the past, but, okay, so.
We're more than a year out than what I thought we would be initially when they gave the original timeframes. And the other thing that Kathy and I have started to discuss is this need for, is there a need or is there not, or a little more structure in the elementary grades for a literacy program and what that might look like and how can that really be, what grade level would it sit in and how, so we're in those initial phases for that, but that's something I think that you'd expect to see over the next year or two as well. So it's science and et cetera, literacy. We've pretty much covered the gamut with world languages. We've got, our programs have all been updated. We're committed to having a more rigorous program and that's what we dedicated the last few years to. We upgraded the math texts as well and we feel we're in a pretty good place with that. We've begun to do some things with social studies, so there might be some additions that you'd see in that world as well.
So two comments, one in terms of, at the elementary level, that this is going to come back around when we talk about world language expansion and the need for, where do you find the time to do all of the things and the decisions that we have to make about what the priorities are? So we're going to talk some more and very excited about some thoughts and ideas, not in this budget, but going forward in terms of providing a really, a really great science program at the elementary level. So that'll come back around when we talk about, when we talk, next week, when we talk about the middle school budget. And then the second part of that was, oh yes, was that we have to always be aware of the fact that at the elementary level, teachers teach all content areas. So when we're bringing in new initiatives and professional development, we can't do it all at once. We have to be very respectful in terms of if the focus is on math and that's what the professional development is, we can't also bring on a literacy program because the same teachers are saying, are teaching all of those areas. And so we've really, Bob's really worked very, very carefully at doing that and in providing professional development that is not just a one-shot deal. So some exciting things happening this year around some professional development that it happens initially and then a second visit back with the same provider who actually goes into classrooms and models instruction has been having just really great results. And then the third thing is the continuation of a program that started K1 is now being looked at as part of their new initiative 2.3. So all of those connections are happening through this work. And so as a result, we don't see big program asks right now because it's more about instruction and that's the focus, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to do central office now?
I can ask about curriculum first. And, well, yeah, I think this is probably the right category. So just sort of to piggyback off what you were talking about, Kathy.
Yeah.
The last couple of years, we have had big program asks in this area with the full day K and the co-teaching and this is sort of a, we don't have that this year, which is a welcome relief because we've, you know, we've done a lot in a short period of time. And I think we've talked about, you know, at some point getting some, maybe too early, but getting some feedback or data about what the payoffs are starting, we're starting to see from those investments that we've already made. And the one that I think is sort of still hanging out there, and we had this presentation a month or two ago about the foreign language. It looks like there's, we're not implementing any, any, any changes to foreign language or is that going to be when we hear from the schools?
Next week. So we're going to talk, we're going to be prepared to talk about that. Our recommendation, I know I've sent you some communication from me just to give you an idea of where that is in this budget. But we have that committee, as you know, and we wanted to frame the discussion around the middle school budget because, and we've met with Marilyn Miracle and with the committee, because the decision about expanding is a K6 decision.
Mm-hmm.
And so we wanted to frame it less around central office and more around middle school and elementary curriculum discussion, building-based. So when we bring in that level next week, starting with the middle school and high school, if it could wait, it's not, it can't be.
Yeah, 17.
Secondary's next and then elementary? No? Okay. I stand corrected. What are we doing next week?
Elementary.
Oh.
Elementary and special.
And you can't know about it. No, we'll start the discussion next.
Can you wait?
I'm not, I'm not a patient girl.
But I just feel that, you know, just in terms of, I don't know if the, if that group is coming. I think we talked about inviting them.
I don't know if they are. I think we're going to present.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have certainly had a lot of discussion around it, but if it's okay, we probably better prepare.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, that was the only curriculum-related thing I thought was.
Central office?
Do you want to move on, Bill?
Sure. Is there any other comments or questions? Nope. Great. All right. Central office. Bob, you're up again.
Actually, that's me.
Oh, never mind.
We're going to let Ralph start this time.
So, as you might imagine, I would prefer that you look at the numbers.
Okay.
Okay? Because I think it's an easier explanation.
He's a numbers guy.
Rather than focusing on the executive summary, which confuses everybody all the time because of the negatives and the offsets.
I don't know, they're doing all right.
Oh, it confuses me.
Okay.
So it starts off with the professional salaries. The salaries of individuals in central office for FY17, they're budgeted at FY16's actual pay. The FY16 budget was based upon what they were making in FY50 because we didn't want to presume that there was going to be an increase for salary employees. So what you see there for the superintendent, for example, is exactly what she's making now. The next line down is the salary reserve. It's a lot lower this year. In FY16, we had to fund salary reserves for everybody except for the custodians because they had a contract going in FY16. So FY17 now, the only people who have not settled, with the caveat that I'm assuming that the teacher contract will be ratified, the only folks who haven't settled are the nurses and then the custodian contract ends at the end of this year and any non-unit people. So that's why that's gone down. The assistant superintendent's salary, as I said, is what the current salary is, as is the business manager, as is the business staff salaries. HR, the reason for a decrease is because there was an interdepartment transfer of an individual from HR to the assistant superintendent's office. The teacher intent offset, it's about the same from year to year, from FY16 to FY17. The background there, what that number represents, teachers throughout the district have to inform us in October of every year of their intention to change lanes in the salary grid. In other words, they're going to take graduate-level courses that are going to qualify them to move a column, which is a part, which is a way that they, one of the ways that they get a raise. Well, in each teacher's home department, we budget for the value of 100% of those lane changes. But we know that they're not all going to achieve those lane changes. So what we do is we take an offset. It happens to, historically been budgeted in central office. These numbers assume that only 30% of the value of the lane changes will actually come true. And historically, that's been about the number. I think one year since I've been here, it cost us a little bit of money. But the other years, it's been pretty much on target or we've saved money on that. Okay? So HTA retirement incentives, HTA members have to give us advance notice of their intention to retire. And if they do that, they get $2,500 a year for the last three years of their careers. So this year, we only have, FY16, we only have one person who was in that pipeline. Next year, there are three people in that pipeline. Teacher longevity, well, as people stay here longer, they qualify for longevity. And most of that is teacher, some of that has to do with central office staff, custodians. We just lump it all into a central office teacher longevity account. Under secretarial and clerical, the school committee secretary is unchanged, the superintendent's assistant, that is what she's making now. Here's the other side of the assistant superintendent's secretary's salary. The reason it's not identical is because the pay rates are slightly different between what was budgeted and what the person actually is making in that transfer. Central office extra help, we're zeroing that out. We have used it in the past. Mostly it's used if we need some extra hands onboard when we're doing bus passes. So if we need any, we'll use the bus fee revolving account. It's not a lot of money. Subcaller, subcaller pay, that's what she's making now. We haven't funded the attendance officer for several years. Crossing guards, this is the only increase that we're requesting and it's not, budget to budget, it's an increase of .2. We actually have the person hired. That was brought to your attention when we did the financial report a couple of weeks ago. This is just to continue funding that position. We now have crossing guards in the morning at Hopkins and Center, as well as the high school over near the White House and the high school down near Maple Street. And then in the afternoon, we have the fellow who directs traffic in front of the high school. He then goes down to Hopkins and does that. We also now have a gentleman directing traffic out in East Main Street to help the center school buses get over to the Elwood School Quaker. We have a new crossing guard, which is the .2. In the morning, she does in front of, near Hopkins. In the afternoon, and then she runs over to Center School and does some there as well.
I think she drives.
Yes, she drives. She drives. So this is all because of, you know, increased vehicular traffic, increased foot traffic. It just makes it a lot safer.
Safety concerns.
And it gets those buses moving. The offset by other funds, as you know, two of the crossing guards are funded by parking fees because they're directing traffic here at the, at the high school. Superintendent's contracted services, that's made up in FY17 of two things. The cost to audit the end-of-the-year report and we've increased that this year because the price of the audit is up a couple hundred bucks. Plus, we're assuming that we're going to need some help as the town and the school department transition into Munis, the Munis HR module. And we think that, you know, we want to have a little bit of money in our budget to, you know, make sure that we, make it, make it work right. The school physicians, what she's making now. Transportation, it's only up 1,900 bucks. Transportation, it's only up 1,900 bucks, even though I'm assuming a 2% Consumer Price Index increase because FY sixteen's budget came in, FY sixteen's budget for busing is higher than we needed because we assumed the Consumer Price Index would be 2.5%. It came in at .7%. So even with a 2% increase, it's only going up 1,900 bucks budget to budget. Homeless transportation stays level. The next one, school food services, this is something that we've been talking about at the end of the year, for the last few years. Regulations changed, and now at the end of the year, any uncollected debt, school lunches charged by students that go uncollected, the regulations no longer allow the revolving account to carry that balance. So we've had to charge it to the budget. The school committee has, that was brought to you for approval at the end of last year. That was $30,000 just a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I was looking at that. It's crazy.
It's now, you know, we really hustle after that, but still, there's always going to be something outstanding at the end of the year. There's only one way to stop that, and that's to say no charging. And we're not going to do that. The offsets for bus fees.
Try and get the cheese sandwich in there.
Yep. Offsets for bus fees, I mentioned earlier, you know, we've been going to the well. This year, we collected $210,000, and that's all we're putting against next year's budget. School committee supplies, that's an account that's been budgeted and not used, so we zeroed it out. Postage, we level funded. Office supplies, assistant superintendent supplies, which mostly covers materials that are needed for the new teacher orientation.
And the admin retreat.
The admin retreat, that's right. School committee conference, that's if you go. Nobody seems to have gone the past few years. Advertising has to do with help wanted ads and bid advertising. Central office travel is to cover any mileage reimbursements for central office staff. The school census, that's a charge that has gone, gone back a number of years where the town clerk undertakes a census of town people. And in particular, they're looking for school age children. We get charged for a portion of that, that service. And the 975 bucks is what the cost was in FY sixteen. Emergency prep, we've dropped that down. We've spent about $40,000 each of the last two years. Nevertheless, funding to cover replacement of two-way radios and batteries is in there, as is funding for a new mobile communication and notification system that I think somebody mentioned earlier. Crisis GO has been included. School committee legal, we leveled. Technology, we decreased by 1,200. The copier equipment, that's for excess copy charges plus any tuner and that sort of thing. Life insurance, that covers life insurance policies that are in the individual contracts for all the administrators. And then the new equipment, that's simply the annual lease cost for one of the copiers in central office. So overall, central office will cost $2.2 million next year, which is $530,000 less than this year. But obviously, that's artificial because of all of the changes in the salary reserves. But it is what it is. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm assuming that this is the time, would be the appropriate time to talk about the fees, because this is when we're talking about. Yeah. This is probably the time, because we're talking about, and I know that it's athletic as well as transportation. I know that there had been a commitment on the part of the school committee to reduce fees, I believe, until there were none. And so we bring the, we bring the budget to you where it is at this point, as far as we could get it. If that's a priority based on past agreements, then that is something that the school committee will need to discuss and take up and then give us feedback on. Our discussion on this was lengthy. And really, in the end, we are feeling, because we weren't here during any of the discussions about fee reduction, was that we feel that the fees are reasonable. We feel that what people are being asked to pay for transportation and for activities is reasonable request and allows us to be able to come in at this level. But that is, it's completely up to you to have that discussion. I think this is a good time to begin it because it's maybe not either or, it's maybe reduce one and not the other, and then asking us to go back and find other places where we can, can reduce, so.
So you guys can ask questions first on that, but it was like my top question on here.
Okay.
Because I've been hearing it all night.
Yeah.
That they're leveling the fees. So I, because I recall during our budget discussion last year, that when we came to the end and saw the astronomical percentage and realized that that was one of the items that we might need to take off.
Yeah.
It was quantified for us what, and I think, I was not on the committee when that promise was made either, so I don't know what the discussion was about it. My understanding over the past few years, and this might be both a question for those members of the committee that were here and also for you, is was it a 10% discount every year, or was it just discounting the fees?
No, it was 10% every year, which is $50,000, I think, Ralph.
Well, right now, if you, if you decreased the fees again, it would increase the budget by $35,000.
So it's, and it's the same, because we didn't decrease everything, right? We targeted.
No, transportation and.
Transportation and athletics, those are the only.
Parking, transportation and athletics.
But we didn't like, well, and it was, I think it was full day K, but then, we don't have that anymore. But then, I think, like, F1, we left alone.
Right.
Yeah.
Preschool, we increased.
Preschool, we increased.
With parking, you should probably figure on 40. I think I liked it to think about that one.
Is there?
That's about another .001 or something like that.
So, and I feel like I may ask this every year, so it probably, is there a way to differentiate? I'd be really interested to see, when we talk about the transportation fees, the, is it sixth grade and below, where we only charge people who live within two miles of the school?
Sixth and below.
Yeah, let's flip it the other way. Everybody from grade seven through 12 has to pay regardless of distance. K to six, if they live inside of two miles, they have to pay.
So, so for, so the reason I ask that question is, so as I think about the fees, I know we've been reducing the athletic fees. I'd actually like to see some numbers on that, on, because I honestly don't remember where we are and what the total revenue is for those. So I think some, I think we need some of the numbers to have this discussion.
I think we need that data.
But I'd like to see the transportation fees broken down, because for me personally, the one fee that continues to bother me the most is the transportation fee for grade six and under, because it, it's a fee we're allowed to charge if they live within two miles of the school, but it feels like a really unrealistic rationale for a fee. Kids who lives at the bottom of Ash Street gets charged to take a bus to Center. We can't expect them to walk.
That would take some number crunching, because we don't necessarily capture that.
Yeah.
You know, you're either eligible or you're not. But I'm sure we have the information and would have to manipulate some spreadsheets.
It would also result in a significant increase in number of buses. Right? If we're now transporting all children K six at no cost.
Everybody's going to want to ride.
Yeah, everyone's going to ride.
Well.
Are you talking about a reduction?
You might, you might end the traffic with the parents that drop off and pick up, though.
Not been managed quite well. That's not been a issue.
But you might have to cut something else as a result.
But if you would like us to give you the data, that's what we're hearing.
I'd be interested to see, to see the data, because I guess.
Can we see from where it started and then the 10% in the years? I don't know if it's been three or four, that you've done the 10%.
I think you're asking two different questions. You're asking, you're asking what the changes in the fees has been, but you're asking how many, basically, how many kids, how many kids are eligible, or how many kids live in that two-mile radius and how many of them pay to ride the bus? So basically, what is the, what is the number of people who are refusing to pay a bus, bus fee? Because how would that change your ridership if there was no bus fee?
I mean, again, I'm not suggesting necessarily that this would be where we go because of the revenue impact and the potential bus impact. But yeah, to sort of, thinking about it, if we were to eliminate the bus fee for the kids of sixth grade and younger, what's the impact? And so that's a revenue impact. And then if, I know we can't say a kindergarten who's not taking the bus will start taking it because they don't have the fee, but we, we guess.
At first blush, let me, let me throw this out at you. Because grade six is the, is the, is the grade that messes up the whole thing. Because the grade six kids ride to school with everybody else, seven through 12. And those buses are jammed in the morning. So if you gave a free bus pass to every sixth grader, you're putting, you're putting all the sixth graders who currently don't ride the bus on a bus, and there has no room for them.
Sure. And again, I understand we could be talking about a significant expense change logistics resulting from this. And I'm not saying, that's why I want to see the numbers, because on the flip side of it, I continue to believe that this is a fee that is, quite frankly, unfair. Because we can charge people who live within two miles. If we could charge everybody, I'd actually be less, I'd have less of a problem with it. I just think this is sort of, it's an arbitrary antiquated law in Massachusetts that allows us to do this and doesn't, so that's, it's the one that, yeah.
Not to get political, but I have to. I can't, I can't bite my tongue on this.
Uh-oh.
When, when Governor, when Romney first became governor, his first budget included a section that would have eliminated the mandated busing, which would have meant that everybody would have had to pay. I said, this is great.
I'm not sure I like that either.
Well, but.
It would have been equitable.
It would have been equitable, but I'm just saying.
You just said that you wish you could charge, you would feel better.
No. I feel better than the current structure. I'm not saying.
There was that, there was that proposal that would have changed that, but obviously it went nowhere.
But I think there's also a practical concern here, is that we are not in a town where all of the, within two-mile radius is actually a suitable walking environment for those little kids. And, and I mean, I can say that as a parent, and I can, and I know exactly how far two miles is from Elmwood School and some of the neighborhoods up by Saddle Hill Road. And I'm sorry, having a kid walk on that is just not possible. But the thing is, is that I think that the other consideration that we, we haven't talked about, and I don't know how much it matters, and I don't know how much this conversation happened when you were discussing the reduction of fees, but there are other districts that charge for all bus usage, right?
No, no.
You can't.
They can't.
Yeah.
If they live over two miles and they're K six, you cannot charge them.
Okay. So we are only charging for those that we are legally allowed to charge for.
We had talked one time a few years ago about creating a walking zone. I still have all of that, all of that data. And that went nowhere fast.
That'd be good.
But we could have eliminated a couple of buses by having a walking zone with legitimate sidewalks in the area.
I like that. Exercise, fresh air.
I have a feeling it'll be a crossing guard or something.
So John, just to clarify, you want two things. You want the dollar impact, the cost impact of not charging K six. So I understand what you're looking for. You're wanting to know, just basically, what are the numbers? How many kids who live less than two miles are riding the bus?
Yeah.
That's what you want to know. And then you also want to know, all of you, the impact, the data on what would it, what would the percent, so I heard 35,000 if we reduce another, 40?
With parking, yeah, with parking.
40,000 to reduce a 10% in the budget and what that would do to the 4.31.
And we usually, and we usually get, when we have the fee discussion, we usually, there's a table, right, that shows us the fee, what the expected revenue that comes in for it is. So I think, I think we need that to have this discussion.
Yeah, we have time to get to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then I don't know.
John definitely has comments.
The only other thing I would, I would also ask is, so speaking as, we were on the committee when this started, but one of the things that we looked at in this discussion is, obviously, we're not the only district that charges fees. So I know that there, we had some comp data.
Yeah, I can still get a hold of that.
I don't know if that would be helpful, especially for those who are.
I would tell you we're lower than anybody.
And Kathy said that. And that is true. Our fees are lower than, than most, if not all, comparable towns. But so that's correct. But I will say, in the, in the time that, okay, so first of all, there was a time where there were no fees. And then there were years where the budget increase for the school department was, and the town, was like three quarters of a percent. And there were no options. And this is true for every town. And this is when every town started putting in fees. And, and the conversation, and that was before I was on the school committee, so that's like, I don't know if there was electricity. There was not LED lighting. But the conversation was, you know, we really have no other alternative. And when we're able, we'll reduce this because, you know, to pay to get to your free and, you know, required public transportation. So, so when we started to come back out into better economic times, the conversation was, now's the time to start, you know, someday you've got to do it. We're going to draw the line in the sand. We're going to start, we're going to do it over 10 years. And this is maybe, we've done it three years or four years in a row. But what I, the point, that a point I also think is important to make is that in that amount of time, although we have reduced those fees by 10% every year, particularly at the high school level, and I'm not thinking clearly about the middle school, there have been, oh, also the middle school, there have been a lot of other new fees added in that didn't previously exist. So laptop, right? Before, when, when we started fees, there were, you were not, and you have a lot of option. I think we've done a great job of providing alternatives for parents for laptops, which are expensive, but that's something that didn't exist before. The fees for all of our trips, which are not required, but are certainly highly regarded and an important part of our experience, you know, I mean, it's going to cost $1,000 to go to DC this year. So those fees have increased. So, you know, we are trying to reduce and have so far stayed true to our commitment to reduce the transportation and athletic and parking fees. But in the meantime, other fees have either been introduced or increased as well. So I just think that's an important thing to consider, and I know that this is a conversation we're going to continue to a different meeting. But I know you are alternating with, with Brian, and I want to make sure that you had the full context of sort of how we have arrived to the point where we are right now.
Thank you, Jean.
That's my long-winded comment.
And just in that vein, I have to repeat what I've repeated for four years. Please don't bring the bus fee to zero, because if you do that, you're going to need a lot more buses at the secondary level. Because you'll have to have a seat for every kid, six through 12. And you're going to need a lot more than 24, 25 buses for those kids. Thank you.
Okay.
I can't help myself either. So it was never practical for my daughter to walk along the 495 on and off ramps to get to Elmwood. We're also going to have over 200 units of affordable housing within two miles of Elmwood. And somebody brought up a really good point about traffic. Maybe there's a better way to do this whole thing. The community may accept just a higher cost of transportation in the budget, spread out in a little, in a little more equitable manner. And it might be worth taking a look at, how many cars would we get off the road in the morning if we did something like that? So just a couple of things to consider. I understand why the fees are in there. I understand why we want to get rid of them. And with the change in housing in Hopkinton and the traffic patterns, we may, maybe it's just a bigger standalone budget item that the community accepts to achieve a couple of things. But I wouldn't recommend getting rid of sixth grade route.
Some, some communities do have transportation outside of the school budget, because the law requires the town, quote, the town to provide transportation. Most of the time, that's the school department, but some have it on the town side.
So to just extend what you're saying, you know, there are years where we can afford things as a town more easily than other years. And so if we were. And so, if we were to completely eliminate the bus fee, there would be a year where there would be a major increase in that particular line item. And then it would, you know, it would still be bigger, but it would not increase as exponentially. And so, to your point, there may be a year looming where that's, where you can project that that, if that's a goal, that that would be more easily absorbed on the tax base than in another year where a lot of other things were coming on, or other important projects are already in line or whatever. So, I mean, I think that needs to be part of consideration. I think that's a good point that you raised, because, you know, it's broader than just this one item in our, in our budget.
I mean, something that comes to mind, I know, I know we've surveyed a lot of things to death, and that may not be the answer here, but it may be an interesting point, a data point for us to understand how many people would, would change their mind on the busing based on fees. And I don't know, I'm definitely not volunteering to word it, but it's just something that we should consider, because trying to anticipate what parents would do differently is only based on five people's experience, and that's not, that's not useful, I think, information for all of you. It's very, it's very different for two working parents versus one working parent, you know, to, to deal with bus situations and schedules and things. So I, so I don't know how, what the impact would be, but I just think that, that may be something that we, we look at in addition to it. I mean, I think, I think the fee discussion is, is difficult, but I think that we don't really have all the information behind it either.
I think that's a longer-term project than the FY17 budget, but I agree that it would be interesting to get that. I mean, because I just don't think that, I can't see that you're going to eliminate fees this year. Are you?
Oh, I, I'm not, I didn't think we were entertaining a discussion of eliminating the fees altogether, but I thought the question on the table was, are we going to do the 10% reduction for this year?
I think that's the question.
Because I don't even think we know.
But a lot of other great thoughts have come forward that we are going to need to be thinking about and preparing for, because I think what I heard you say, John, is that the 40B housing is within, less than two miles, so within...
I think, I haven't measured it, but I'm pretty sure.
And you have to cross Main Street. I mean, it's not, it's not like...
But we know that those children are not going to be able to walk, obviously, from that school, to Elmwood. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about going forward as, as a town continues to grow, and ways that we can do this in a, in an informed manner. What are the impacts going to be? How many people would make different choices? And what would it look like in terms of the numbers of kids that would be on buses? I think this raises really great questions for us to explore over the upcoming year.
I think it also is, and this is obviously moving way outside of the discussion, but you know, we're having discussions about a bus parking lot on the new, on the new school site. If we are moving in that direction where there'd be a necessity for more buses, we need that information as well, because you're not going to want to all of a sudden make that parking lot obsolete because you can't fit enough buses there. So, you know, there, there are a lot of spider webs that come out of this discussion, but, but certainly all very important questions, and certainly have major budget impact in the coming years. So, and I don't think any of us were thinking no fees this year, because I don't even know what that number is, so.
Well, it's like I've been saying for a long time, it's all about the busing.
Right.
It is. I haven't heard you say that, Ralph. You haven't been around the office much, John.
We have 3,400 students, right?
Yeah.
And how many of them ride the bus now?
Probably 2,000.
Okay, so that's, you know, what is that, a third of kids are not riding the bus? That's, that's a substantial swing. Because what your point is, is when there's no fee, you have to plan for every single one of those 3,400 kids has to have a seat, whether they sit in or not.
There's a tipping point fee too, right? There's the negligible...
Yeah, the tipping point, the price of the bus pass really hasn't had an impact on ridership.
Oh, it hasn't?
No, it hasn't. The price of the late fee really had no impact on people making sure they got their fee in on time.
Due to planning purposes. Again, no fee, you have to issue 3,400 bus passes.
Right.
Even if somebody never rides it.
Yeah.
Just in like year seven, if you're down to 30% of it.
Right. Does everybody, yeah, does everybody buy one for the heck of it?
And you have, you know, it's not like the airplanes where you bump people, you know? Thank you, Mike. You have to assume that they're all going to ride.
Yes.
You know, the fee, you got to take a late bus.
You can't oversubscribe a bus.
I really can't imagine those phone calls, like, at all.
We overbooked.
I mean, you need, you would literally need an entire customer service department at that point, so.
I want to thank the school committee for appreciating that humor. Thank you.
Lord.
I'll be at the end of the meeting.
It is.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Thank you so much.
All right. So I think we have finished up our budget presentations for the evening. Is that correct, Dr. McLeod?
That is correct.
And being that we were really trying hard to fill time to get everyone here, because we were moving far too fast, we are done with the agenda for this evening. Our next meeting is a special meeting on the budget, December 10th at 7:00 PM, and we will be taking up elementary schools and the special education department that night.
So we will therefore not be talking about foreign language?
And capital.
And cap, and we are doing capital as well.
Oh, we're going to...
We did change it on the slide.
Okay.
We're moving the capital request prioritization to that meeting as well.
Correct. Okay, great. So thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
We have to vote, too.
Oh, sorry. I knew there was something I was...
Because I'm not staying here.
I'm moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All right, all those in favor of adjourning now?
Yes.
Yes, and it's unanimous. We are now adjourned at 9:00.